Good afternoon and welcome to the Hamilton County Board of Commission meeting October 19th, 2023. We will begin with the introductions on the dice.
Kristi Rachel, Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Harvey, Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Summer O'Dumas, Commissioner.
Good afternoon, I'm County Commissioner Denise Dreehouse.
Jeff, we're the Board Administrator.
And I'm Hamilton County Commission Board President Alicia Reese. We always start our meetings off with a moment of silence and certainly we pray for peace. And so much is going on, so we have a silent prayer. Amen. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous session.
Second.
Monsieur Reese.
Yes.
Monsieur Dreehouse?
Yes.
Monsieur Summer O'Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you. We open it up for public comments. Is there anyone on Zoom? No one's on Zoom and we have no comment cards, so I assume no one in the audience would like to speak. Great. Okay, well we'll then go to comments and motions by the Commissioners, Vice President Dreehouse.
All right, thank you. Just a couple of things. I'm looking very windblown today because I went on a tour of the parks this morning. It was a very windy ride on the golf court through Miami Whitewater, but it was a beautiful day to go out and take a look at the wetlands and just all the projects they've got going on. They've got many, many acres. It's over on the west side of Cincinnati and the Parks, great, Hamilton County Great Parks is doing a very nice job of reclaiming that land and preserving the land. So it was, it was fun to be out and about this morning on a golf cart. I also attended with others the Logan Commons Groundbreaking down by Finley Market. So this is going to be a new CMHA senior building across from what is our new garage that we're putting in place right to the west of Finley Market. So it's an eight, or 500 car garage. It has a beautiful mural on it. It's got a live wall, a brick facade, so it's coming along. It's going to be open in November. And so there is just a lot going on in that area. And so the groundbreaking was just another element of some of the progress that's happening over in that part of town. And then I participated on a panel for Girls Health Period over at Union Terminal. They've got a Smithsonian Institute exhibit called Girlhood... It's complicated, which runs through January 14th of next year. And it is about girls in the United States over the history of the last like hundred years and what girls have experienced and how they have participated in the community and some of the challenges and opportunities that they have faced. And so it's a really, really interesting exhibit. I've had an opportunity to go through that. And then there was this panel to talk about where we are now and we talked about the legislation recently passed to provide period products in schools at no cost. So that was a lot of fun, but I would encourage folks, if anybody's listening and has any interest, it goes through January 14th down at the Union Terminal. It's well worth the visit to go down there and take a look at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Dumas.
I have a few things. I attended the Quarterly Emergency Management Meeting. Nick Crossley is the Director and we are in good hands. And so they're not only doing the things they need to do for our county, but looking proactively for any emergencies that may come forth. So it's always a very interesting meeting. I met with Holly Christman as it relates to childcare services. I attended, as I said previously, a panel, the African American Coalition for Childcare Workers. And I met with Holly to look at possible funding for that organization or more additional childcare centers. I was really impressed with what Holly sent me, that we've funded about 80 childcare centers. But we're going to try to break it down and make sure that we were as inclusive as possible as it relates to the diversity of centers. And I also met with Megan and Megan Gosney and Lisa Webb about the One Ohio Foundation Local Distribution, about 800,000 coming to our county right now. And some of the priorities as it relates to, the RFP was sent out and they made some decisions as a committee to bring forth to the Commissioners to see if we agree with recommendations to move that money forward. And just came back from the Laborers Local Luncheon, which is always good, and they were going to honor a few people there. So labor is very important to our county. That's all I have.
Thank you. I've got a couple of things. Just came back, I think, all three of us from the Friends of Labor Luncheon and at the Palmer's and Fight Pipe Fitters Hall. Also, I attended the 35th Pastorial as well as the Church Anniversary of Corinthian Baptist Church honoring Pastor Casey Smith and First Lady Connie Smith. And the place was, it was sold out. It was amazing. It was a great, great crowd and a great well due honor for Pastor Casey Smith, so I was excited about that. Also, I stopped by the Avondale Empowerment Day. Our 513 Relief Bus was in partnership with the Urban League and many other services for the Avondale Empowerment Day. I chaired the Emergency Management Meeting and that was a great meeting as was stated earlier. You know, our focus is to just try to keep people ready so we don't get caught. So we say, you know, stay ready so we don't have to get ready. So they're going to have a lot of training with groups and organizations and continue that. So I thought that was very good. Also was at the groundbreaking and spoke at the groundbreaking of Logan Commons, which is Senior Affordable Housing. And this is part of the $40 million that we put aside for affordable housing. So this was a project that we invested $1 million and without our investment and some others, it would not be able to move forward. So we were very happy to be there along with Gregory Johnson, who is the CEO of CMHA, it's a partnership with CMHA and our partnership through CDF and the City of Cincinnati and a number of other funders. So that's going to be, we're very excited about that project. We need more. I think it's about 42 units of senior housing and it'll have a senior facility there that they can enjoy activities. So very excited about that. Also, in addition to that, very excited that Channel 5, WLWT, is picking up the Sherri Shepherd Show on a national basis. And they brought her to town to announce it. And I want to thank her and John Murray. They toured the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame and it was on national television. And it was great to hear her say that, you know, she lived in LA most of her life and she's seen nothing like this. And she lives in New York, she says now, and she's seen nothing like this. So that was a major, good, free national publicity as well as it was carried here locally. After the tour, they had an event for her at the Urban League Justice and Policy Center and I was happy to go there for that luncheon. And they had a sit down conversation one-on-one with her. So that was very good. With the interview by Ashley Kirkland, but I want to also thank David Seals from Channel 5 that put all that together. So that was really good. We're getting a lot of feedback from people saying we saw Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame on the Sherri Show. So I thought that was very good. And thank Channel 5 again for that. In addition to that, a couple announcements. The 513 Relief Bus will be celebrating its 100th stop. And that's pretty huge already. It has helped over 12,000 people. I know we'll have some new numbers. Our old numbers was 12,000 between when we started the bus originally and now, and we should have more numbers, so it'll be higher than that. But it's the 100th stop. It's going to be Monday, October 23rd. It'll be in Lincoln Heights and it'll be at St. Monica's. And they have a whole activity going on there. We're going to be excited to launch in partnership with the Health Commissioner. We will have birth certificates now that will be available. You can come out and get your birth certificate on the bus. So very excited about that. And also on that day will be the demolition of one of the, I think it's a former school in Lincoln Heights. And they have a press event, I believe, at 10 o'clock. So they invited me to come and be there, I'm sure all of us. And so we'll be able to go there and then just go down the street to the 100th stop. So we have a lot going on in Lincoln Heights on Monday. So we're looking forward to it. Also, as everyone knows, it is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And I was very happy to kind of start the recognition and kind of paint the county pink type of initiative a couple of years ago. That day is going to be on next Thursday, October 26th. And ask my, not just my colleagues, but everyone, if you can in the county, put on something pink. We'll have a photo that we take. We'd like to honor also any of our employees that are survivors. We'll also have other survivors. And the Commissioners will invite anyone that you may know that's a survivor. Just get the names to VEDA because we do give, we have certificates that all of us, we give out. But if we could get the names, we can get the certificates in. So I just wanted to remind everyone on Thursday, next Thursday, we'll be in pink. I think that is all of mine that I have on here for announcements. Yeah, I think that's it. So I will turn it over to Mr. Aludo.
Commissioners, no comments or bile leaves today.
Okay, great. Let's get right into it. Let's get it. Okay, let's get into it then. We've got our regular agenda from the Engineers' Office.
Thank you. Todd Long, Chief Deputy of the Engineers' Office, for the record. We only have one item today, so we're also a bit light on the, on the agenda. The item that we're presenting today is a resolution for a consultant agreement for a bridge improvement on East Miami River Road located in Colrain Township. It's approximately north of Thompson Road. The total agreement is for design purposes. And the dollar amount for that selection service is $79,650. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, great. We'll open it up. Vice President Dreehouse.
No questions.
Commissioner O'Dumas, any questions?
That's coming out of the Road and Bridge Fund.
Great. I make a motion to approve item number one.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer O'Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Next is Environmental Services.
Commissioners, just very quickly, Brad Johnson is here from Department of Environmental Services to discuss the Climate Pollution Reduction Grant that we received in cooperation with OKI and DOES played a very large role and will continue to play a large role in the implementation of this grant. So Brad?
Well, thanks Jeff. So we have Brad Johnson, Director of Hamilton County Environmental Services. Keeping the theme, we have one item, so we'll keep it light, but a very, very exciting item. This is something that I know excites me, excites the departments. But we, the Climate Pollution Reduction Grant, if you're not familiar with it, it's the federal program that released $5 billion to bring, basically looking at climate reduction opportunities and bringing that to both the state level and the local level. So the way that they, they're doing this program is they released Phase 1 earlier this year. And Phase 1 is to really look at the planning aspect, communities that don't have plans to address climate change. This is an opportunity to tie into these things, to get that rolling. And so the way it's working here in the Cincinnati area is they, they looked at the top 67 local communities. And the good news is that Cincinnati fell into that. The bad news is Dayton fell out, but there were a few metropolitan areas. The bad news is Dayton fell out, but there were a few metropolitan areas that opted out. And the good news is Dayton is back into it now. So we're not the only ones. And the state of Ohio, the state of Ohio has opted to be in, and then Cleveland, Toledo, Columbus, Dayton, Cincinnati. So what does that mean for Hamilton County? OKI, I'm sure you're all familiar with OKI, the Regional Council of Governments, they're the lead agency on this. And what they're looking for us to do is to hire a sustainability coordinator to evaluate the plan and be a part of that process. And this is a four-year process to go through this. So the great news is that they are offering us $165,000 toward, of the $1 million, to put toward disposition. And again, this will be to address the plan, but also being under Environmental Services, this is exciting because this will open up opportunities where, you know, we've been working with fleet vehicles, EV, solar, all these other things. You know, Ralph and his staff with facilities and energy efficiency, this will be an expert in the area that will be able to take us to areas that we've not gone in the past. So very, very exciting. Some of the partners on this, just so you're aware, the City of Cincinnati is a big partner. The City of Cincinnati actually does have a plan, so that's a leg up that we can kind of use some of the things they have to incorporate into it. Green Umbrella, I'm sure you're all familiar with Green Umbrella, great partner, they'll be involved. Indiana University Environmental Resilience Institute, and then the Northern Kentucky Area Development District. So with that, if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you. I do have a question. On the 165,000, and that goes toward the person that would be hired, but it's for four years, is that?
It is.
So that's like at $41,250. Can you get an expert at that rate?
So here's where, here's the good news. Is we, Environmental Services, as you know, is two departments, or two agencies where we have Southwest Ohio Air, we also have Hamilton County Resource, which looks as solid waste and keeping the amount of waste as minimal to our landfill. So we can actually, those are all restricted funds. We can use funding through those two other agency sources to fill the gap of what's missing in that. So that's, that's the good news with that.
Okay, great. I was just wondering, I don't think you'll be getting an expert at 41,000. The other thing I was just going to say, it's great because I just want to maybe put a little more light on the pollution side. I know we've been dealing with the COVID, so we haven't had a chance to. But, I mean, our levels are getting, they're getting out of hand. And everybody you know is, I mean, myself included, I mean, the allergies, the every, I mean, it's just getting bad out here.
Yeah, I was just talking to Karen Ball in the back, that this has been one of the worst years we've had in regards to particle pollution, so does it used to be called. And a lot of that had to do with the wildfires, but we do have an issue here in the greater Miami Valley. Unfortunately, geologically, it just puts us in an area where we get what's called immersions, and it's hard for that pollution to leave the valley sometimes. But the other good thing, I didn't mention this, but you maybe think about it, is we know that low-income areas and marginalized communities are disproportionately impacted by climate change. So this plan will address that as well. And one of the big focuses we're looking to do is make sure we get to each of those communities and get direct input, both on the committees and in getting out to the public as well. So that's a big part of this plan.
Yeah. No, I think it's great. I just, if we could just get like more regular reports with you or how you want to do it to look at, yeah, what's happening and, you know, what is really...
And next year, there'll be some changes coming out. And there's, they're also looking at the standards right now. Under the Trump administration, some of the standards were kind of kept where they were. But now the Biden administration's looking to make it a little bit more stringent, which will make it more challenging for us, but I'm always up for the challenge.
Yeah, no, I think it's great. And hopefully, public health somehow can at some point be, because I, I mean, I'm thinking like the asthma, the, I mean, it's just, the numbers are going.
All cylinders. When I brought this up to the other directors, the excitement in the room even took me by surprise because what it does, it opens up doors with public health. It opens up more grant opportunities. Nick Crossley with EMA said, through the Hazard Mitigation Plan now, we'll be more eligible for funding. So it's truly an exciting time for Hamilton County with this sustainability position.
This is great. Thank you, Vice President Treehouse.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I'm really excited about this position. Will you make us a promise to come and introduce this person? Once we get somebody on board, because if they're going to be with us for four years, I think we all want to make sure we know who that contact is. And so when you talk about sustainability, you talked about EVs, air quality, and I assume there are other things on the radar. Can you help us just expand? Because when we think about sustainability at the county, we've been doing some work in the past, particularly with our facilities, solar panels. We've invested some in bike trails and some other things. But there's so much more on the horizon. So can you dig in just a little bit and highlight some of the areas that will be areas of importance to this particular position?
Absolutely. You hit on two big ones already with EV. So we can both look internally, internally be in the county and what we're doing within our own facilities and infrastructure, but we can also look externally and see what we can do. And so with solar right now, there's a great opportunity that I've been working on to get additional funding for low-income areas for solar panels. Because one of the obstacles with solar panels is, it's considered more of a upper-middle-class to wealthy addition to a home to save money. And this grant wants to change that. So we'll have those opportunities, working with the local community. So an example would be if the City of Cincinnati obviously has their own plan, but say the City of Montgomery or Loveland or somebody wants to have their own plan, we could assist them with that and be a part of that process. So a lot of this is going to be collaborating, both internally and externally. But some of the other things would be more goal-setting. You know, we've reached a point, you brought up Ralph and facilities, where I think we've kind of hit a lot of those goals that were made in the past. This would be an opportunity to create new, more updated goals, and then to change those goals and the benchmarks as need. Like I said, this will be an expert. You know, it's easy for me to try and create those goals, but I really want somebody that knows and is educated in that area to be doing that. Some of the other things that I was thinking about that they could do is obviously, like I'm doing now, public speaking events, getting in front of you, because a lot of this is getting the word out, too. So I think there'll be a lot of opportunity there. But to be honest with you, Commissioner, I think that me getting the word out with the other directors, like I said, the excitement in that room, I think a lot of these ideas are going to come from within. So that's the excitement of this.
And of course, diverting trash in the landfill, that should be way up on the list, yeah. And we've all been dealing with that. I just took a tour of Rumkey recently and tried to better understand the recycling process and the landfill and all the work that they are doing to try to divert anything from going into that landfill, knowing that we've still got a large load going there. The other thing that occurs to me is stormwater. MSDs in the room, some of their behind the podium, I can't see them, but I know they're here. So MSD, stormwater, and some of that work, it's super high on the radar of the County Commission because of our obligations. Hopefully, that will be something that will be on the list as well.
It definitely goes hand-in-hand with climate change. So I don't know where those opportunities will lie, but we certainly will dive into it and see what we can do. And I'm so glad you mentioned solid waste. I brought it up to that staff already, and I've already received, I think, eight different ideas.
There we go.
On what this, what we can do with sustainability. So there's, this is, like I said, an exciting time as to what we can do moving forward.
That's great. Super, yeah, super glad about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you. I think it's all been said. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
This is great.
And I'll be, I'll be here next week, too, to go over the budget. So that'll be part of the budget process as well, because it is in our budget for next year.
Great. I make a motion to approve item number two.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Treehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
If I could just very quickly, just another bit of kudos to Brad. Holly and I were talking yesterday, and we were both noting that there have been others who have come through the Department of Environmental Services, both of whom will remain nameless, who tried but were not able to get a sustainability coordinator into the department. So Brad figured out a way to get it done, so I just want to congratulate him for that. It's a great thing.
Thanks, Jeff. And I was aware of that. So there was a part of me when I said, oh, this, when the opportunity opened up, I was like, I might be able to get something done that Jeff and Holly weren't able to get. Oh, I was supposed to say that.
That remain nameless.
Nameless.
But I had a huge advantage with this program. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Brad.
Thank you. Mr. Aludo, we go to item number three.
Commissioners, item three on the agenda is a resolution in support of equipping all Hamilton County Sheriff's Patrol Cruisers with AEDs. This is, as the board is aware, a part of the partnership that the sheriff has with the Rotary Club and with Christ Hospital related to Project Heart Restart. The board was approached and agreed to provide $125,000, I believe as half of the contribution, to make sure that all of the sheriff's cruisers were fitted with AEDs, given the degree to which sheriffs as first responders, many times even before any EMS vehicle will arrive, are the first ones on the scene when there's been some sort of cardiac incident. So this is making sure that all of our cruisers are equipped with the ability to respond in that situation. There's also a budget adjustment later on in consent agenda that actually allocates the dollars. This particular resolution indicates the board's support and authorizes that budget adjustment to come forward later in the agenda.
Thank you. I just want to highlight again, you know, Hamilton County, the whole world was watching with DeMar Hamlin and the way that the first responders reacted. And of course, UC Health, what they did. And to see him back up and in uniform and alive, I think it put a lot of focus on the need to have AED, which is Automated External Defibrillator, so people know what that is. I want to commend Sheriff McGuffey to understand it's not just at the hospital, you got to be able to get to the hospital. Sometimes you can't get there. And to put this forward, to have it in our sheriff's patrol cruisers, I think is a big deal. And I know she's reached out, I was at the Rotary Club, I think they're putting some of the additional money in. So you're seeing, you know, public, private, nonprofit partnership. So I do want to give her credit. I'll wholeheartedly support this. And I, again, I think it's forward-thinking and I'm happy to support this. But I wanted to shed some light on Sheriff McGuffey and her leadership, her team over there. So I'll open it up, Vice President Treehouse.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm supportive of the resolution. I was surprised to learn that we don't have AEDs in the sheriff's cruisers. I think, I just assumed that we did. And so when it was brought forward by Christ Hospital and the Rotary and the sheriff, and this partnership formed to fund these in the sheriff's cruisers, it was a unique way to approach something related to public safety. And I applaud the Rotary and Christ for stepping into that space and saying, we want to be part of the solution here, after they learned that the AEDs weren't in the cruisers. So happy to support this. Applaud all of the partners involved.
Awesome. Commissioner Dumas.
Yeah, I think it's a great step to show the county's commitment to public safety. And I would hope that our Communication Department will make our residents aware that we have moved forward to make that happen and maybe do a press release or something to show how important we think this is. That's all I have.
Thank you. I make a motion to approve item number three.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Treehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Next is MSD. Welcome.
Lauren DiGarcia with MSD. We have six items on your agenda this afternoon. And I have with me today Ian Lasky and Joseph Schuster to help with any questions that you might have. Items four and nine are nearly identical, just at different locations, so I'll summarize those together. Both items are legislation to authorize proceeding with design of a sewer lateral assessment project. Item four is the Mill Road Sewer Lateral Assessment, House Number 10490, project in Springfield Township. And item nine is the Johnson Road Sewer Lateral Assessment, House Number 6071 in Greentownship. MSD received petitions from both property owners requesting a sewer lateral to serve their respective properties. So there is 100% support for both of these projects. These are zero-dollar requests today, as the projects will be designed in-house. We are estimating that future construction will be $47,000 each, which MSD would request at a later date after the projects are designed and ready to proceed to construction. Based on the estimated costs, we anticipate assessing the maximum $12,000 to each property owner. So that would take place after the project is complete, and MSD would fund the balance of the project costs. Moving on to item five, this is legislation to authorize an exception to Section 206 of the MSD Rules and Regulations in order to allow the property owner at 611 Ludlow Avenue in the City of Cincinnati to construct a deck over the existing MSD sewer that traverses the property. The rules and regs generally prohibit structures from being constructed over an MSD sewer, but an exception can be granted by the board. This legislation also authorizes an agreement with the property owners, which they've already signed. The agreement would stipulate that the new structure won't adversely impact the MSD sewer. And in the event that it did, the owners would be responsible for any damage that occurs. We recommend approval. Item six is for entry into the Commissioner's Minutes. It is a report on the MSD fees and charges for 2024. These are fees and charges, such as our sewer tap-in fees, license and permit fees. These are not sewer rates that our MSD customers pay, just to clarify that. These are annually adjusted per our rules and regs. The adjustment is based on local prices for material and labor, as published in the Engineering News Records Cost of Construction Index, which illustrated an approximate 6% increase over last year. So the charges and fees will be increased accordingly for next year, 2024. Item seven is also for entry into the Commissioner's Minutes. It is a report of the repolting results from the Spring Oak Drive local sewer. We had a public hearing, as you all probably recall, back in June on this sewer assessment project. Several of the property owners appeared in person or on Zoom and commented, both in support and some in opposition to the project. So MSD has since repolled, as requested, in order to determine the current level of support amongst all benefited property owners, and received responses from all. And it indicates a 50-50 split in terms of support and opposition. These results today are provided for the board's information and for entry into the record. As I said, MSD, at this point, has submitted proposed legislation to the administration. And that legislation would then set a date for the board to consider a resolution to proceed or not with the project. So we anticipate that will be on a future agenda. Item eight is legislation to amend MSD's 2023 operating budget. This request is based on discussions between MSD and the county administration in preparation for MSD's operating budget request for next year. And in an effort to reduce our request, this amendment would reallocate $3 million from our current personnel budget, as well as $500,000 from the SBU non-personnel budget to the wastewater treatment division's non-personnel budget. So 3.5 million total, which is about 1.5% of our total operating budget for this year, would be reallocated within the budget. We're not asking for any additional funds today. This adjustment would provide available funding to initiate certain treatment plant maintenance activities this calendar year, rather than in 2024 as previously planned, so MSD can reduce its budget for next year. The 3.5 million is unencumbered, and MSD doesn't anticipate needing it for its current budgeted purpose. In the case of personnel, we've experienced reduced expenditures due to retirements and position vacancies. And in the case of SBU non-personnel, we've had fewer and less intense wet weather events this year, which is a good thing. So we don't, we haven't needed the funds, and we don't anticipate needing the funds. We recommend approval. And then the final item is item nine, which I summarized with item four. So that's all we have today.
All right. Thank you very much. I'll open it up, Vice President Treehouse.
Thank you. Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. So on item number five, this is the one where you're asking for an exception for building over sewers. We've dealt with this one before, or rather, this issue, not this particular item. So I just want to put a finer point on the distinction between this request and a previous request where someone was asking us if they could put a building on top of a lot where the sewer was running below what would have been that building. And the difference between that and a deck, as you describe it, so I just want to put a finer point on this because this is unusual for us, because we get these requests for homes in particular, and they're denied. So help us, walk us through the difference between these two things.
Sure. And Ian is here, and he can assist if you want more detail. But just generally, I'll start us off with that. It is a case-by-case basis every time you're looking at what's being proposed, what is the nature and condition of the sewer that's going to be affected, and what is the risk involved? Certainly, there's a difference between a deck and a home that somebody's going to be living in. So I would say that's the most distinct difference.
You mean, not only by way of construction, but also by way of access to the property itself?
Exactly. It's a lot easier to get through a deck than it is to get into somebody's house and start, you know, jack... than it is to get into somebody's house and start, you know, jackhammering up there.
I just want to put a fine point on this, because we've been asked over and over again for buildings, in exceptions for buildings. And this is, so this is different from that. I just want to make that very clear. So the other one, item number eight, where there's a reallocation of dollars, I understand there's no budget impact, because it can be absorbed. But you mentioned the SBU, and we haven't heard much about SBU lately, because there haven't been any major weather events that would, you know, have people coming down and talking about that program. I would love to get an update on those dollars, because we set aside quite a bit of money for this to make sure we've got coverage as the years go. So could you, the next time you come, and it doesn't have to be at any specific time, provide us with the money that we set aside in the budget for SBU? How much has been used for this year and how much remains? So that we have a better understanding of that, especially as we go into another budget cycle for next year.
Yeah, if it works for you, Director Christie, I think, could work that into her presentation.
That's, that sounds fantastic. Yeah, I just want to keep track of this. This is the one that my office hears the most about, that's the most forward-facing of the MSD programs. And so I just want to make sure to keep track of those dollars. I'm in favor of doing this, because we haven't had a lot of major, as I said, major flooding events, and so that I can understand how we're spending less right now. But I just want to see how all those figures line up. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you. Items four and five are somewhat easy, because there were individual residents that wanted their improvements to take place, which is much easier. And I heard you say the payment for the residents will be about $12,000. And just wanted to let the people that are listening know that you don't have to pay that upfront, that there is a reasonable payment plan to make sure that that happens if you see something on your property that you'd like to change. And item seven is going to be a little bit of a dilemma for me. That's where we asked for a repolling, and now it's 50-50. And I believe, from what I remember, that some of the occupants are new occupants. And so they made a decision. Maybe they don't want to have that. We're not deciding that today. We're just putting this into the record. But it will be a hard decision for myself, and I'm sure for the board, to decide which way to go with it. But I appreciate the repolling. So thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Okay. I make a motion to approve and receive for the record items number four through nine.
Second?
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes. Thank you. Next, we have the consent agenda.
We do. Thank you, Commissioners. Consent agenda, I'll just walk through these fairly quickly for the board. Item 10 is the auditor's statement of financial transactions for September of '23. Item number 11 is a budget adjustment. This includes the AED units and patrol vehicles that the board had previously authorized in this, in this agenda. At $125,000, there's also a grant in there for disease mitigation at the Justice Center for $55,000, and some funding for the Recorder's Land Record Management System at $100,000. Item number 12 is a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission for tax levies for next year and certifying them to the county auditor. This is required by the Ohio Revised Code, is something that is part of the process every year that counties and taxing jurisdictions all throughout the state do in advance of the creation of tax duplicates for next year. Item number 13 is the resolution approving the agreement for professional lobbying services with the Ferguson Group. Item number 14 are the bids, bid awards, and contracts of the Purchasing Department for September of '23. Item number 15 is a resolution authorizing the award of an invitation to bid for River City Correctional Facility for food and food service supplies for $200,000. Item number 16 is the rejection of an invitation to bid for Hamilton County. This is for the patrol headquarters Academy build-out repurposing. And the, all three of the bidders did not provide the appropriate paperwork. So we have to rebid, rebid that RFP or that ITB. Item number 17 is a resolution approving the 2024 Hamilton County Employee Benefits Program. We have several JFS items. We have item 18 for 1.362 million. This was a, an agreement with Easter Seals Tri-State LLC for peer mentoring through the Benefit Bridge Program. I will note for the record on this that I had an office ask me for some data on the Benefit Bridge Program. JFS has provided that to me, and I will be forwarding that along just so the board has an understanding of the results of the Benefits Bridge Program over the past couple of years. Item 19 is a residential treatment services program, $365,000 with Keystone Richland Center, doing business as foundations of living, for a living. Item number 20 for $2.85 million is for residential treatment services. This is an agreement with the Buckeye Ranch and the Board of County Commissioners. Item number 21 for 1.3 million is another residential treatment services agreement with the Indiana Development Training Center of Lafayette, doing business as TC Harris School. Item number 22 is another residential treatment services agreement, which is for $2.5 million. This is with Lighthouse Youth Services. Item number 23 is a group, is a contract for group home services for $1.2 million, also with Lighthouse Youth Services. And item number 24 is a demonstration project grant for retaining talent after injury and illness in the workplace through the local workforce area number 13, which Job and Family Services works on behalf of. And that is a $200,000 revenue agreement, because that is a grant. We also have item number 25. This is a resolution approving and authorizing a sub-recipient agreement, agreement between the Board of County Commissioners and Tecon Farms for $75,000. The board will remember, this is part of a $300,000 grant that was applied for, for food pantries. Tecon will be using that $75,000 to upgrade their commercial kitchen facilities. We have a item number 26, resolution providing for the use of credit cards within probate court. Item number 27, reporting no objection in the sheriff's office to one liquor permit. We have the monthly investment report for the treasurer for September of '23. And we have the request of an employee, from the coroner's office, a request for the authorization to travel for one employee to San Jose, California. And that is the consent agenda, Commissioners.
Thank you. I had a question on item 12 I had asked before. Is the resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor? I wasn't familiar with the process, but I thought it was a little odd that we would be voting for levies that have not been passed yet. Because I don't want the public to feel like it's a done deal before I even got to the, I didn't even get to the Board of Elections. Why are you asking me to go? You already certifying something. So I didn't know what that process is, because...
So there is a, it's a good, it's a good question, Commissioner. There is a process that's laid out in the Ohio Revised Code where the Budget Commission meets to review the tax budgets of all the different taxing authorities, and then ultimately provides a report back to the, the different, all the different taxing authorities. Again, it's not just the Board of Commissioners, but any taxing authority, it could be a municipality, township, et cetera. They actually received an extension from the, from the State Tax Commissioner this year, the Budget Commission, to conclude their work by September 25. And so they are requiring that, under the ORC, that the, the vote on these occur by October 25, so that they have the time to do all of their work to certify things to the state at the end of the day. To answer your question, which is the substantive part of your question, should it happen ever that a levy is not approved at the ballot, say, November, after a taxing authority has already certified and approved of these rates? There are still other things that the auditor has to do all the way up through the end of December to certify a package to go up to the state. So if, for an example, a levy would not pass, the auditor's office simply would not include that levy on what goes up to the state. So this is just one part of the process. There's a lot more that happens behind the scenes in the auditor's office to certify all of that to the state. So no one has to worry about this being some formative... Really, what the board is doing here is saying, yeah, we agree with your math, Budget Commission. This is currently, as of today, the right amounts. If something were not to pass, that would be taken care of by the auditor before it was sent up to the state.
Okay. So are we approving this or accepting this for the record?
You're approving the, the dollars are the right dollars and, and certifying that back to the auditor for the placement on, onto the, onto the tax duplicate. And we've, we've checked that, and the numbers are correct with the different levy amounts, et cetera.
Gotcha. Yeah, it just seems really, it sends a bad message to me, to the voters, that we've already calculated it in as a win, and you haven't even passed it yet. So that's, that's kind of, that kind of bothers me a little bit, in that. The other thing is item number 15. I just wanted to highlight, because there's been a lot of questions to our board about the River City Correctional Facility. And, you know, we don't, can you just let them know what's the, what's the makeup of that? We don't own it, we don't run it. It's another, the state law.
Couple of things on this particular one, because I had some questions from a couple of offices on this. Number one, you're exactly correct. We don't, the River City Correctional Facility, as a community-based correctional facility in Ohio, has to go, has to utilize the county for certain processes. So they go through, for bids like this, they'll go through our purchasing process. But we don't control their finances. Their money is a, is passed through from the state for us. So we don't control them. We don't govern that board. The board has no authority, really, over a River City Correctional Facility. That being said, there's another, there was another question just about the nature of this contract and what we've done in the past, excuse me, with, say, juvenile court or with the Justice Center on food contracts, et cetera. My understanding is that a lot of this contract relates to bulk food and supplies, a lot of which is being used in the culinary arts program out there. So some of the inmates at River City Correctional Facility are actually using this stuff for some of the programs as they're going through training and culinary arts programs. I know the River City Correctional, I heard from our county purchasing office earlier, the River City Correctional Facility already does use several other small vendors, small local vendors, in the provision of food services out there. We're going to continue to get them hooked up with bold vendors through Robert Bell's office, et cetera. So we'll keep doing that, as the board had requested back with some of those other contracts through those other agencies.
Okay. All right, thank you. I'll open it up, Vice President Drehouse.
I have no questions.
Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you. Item 13, I was wondering, Jeff, from the Ferguson Group, the $100,000 per year, is that normal for us? Is it an increase or what?
That is the, the routine amount. That is not an increase.
Okay. Thank you. And I'd like to speak about item 15. I also had a question with Jeff about the food service and the fact that you've been talking to that entity about bold vendors and trying to make sure that we are inclusive when we use them. And also, I researched them, and it was a national group. And I was thinking, why are we using them? And then I did find out through more research that they are located on Section 11. So they are local. So I was a little bit concerned about that. But I'm glad that we're talking to them about our expectations. That's the only thing that I had.
Great. I make a motion to approve and receive for the record items number 10 through 29.
Second?
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes. No further business. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse. Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.